With the difference of two percentage points in the primary election, Matt Wire and Makua Kai Rothman are in a runoff to decide who will represent Honolulu City Council District 2, which covers part of Windward Oahu, the North Shore, and Central Oahu. And Democratic incumbent Gilvravier faces Republican challenger Brenton Awah for the State Senate District 23, which also covers Windward Oahu to the North Shore to Waihewa. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Olenna Hu. Tonight, we're speaking to candidates seeking a seat on the Honolulu City Council as well as the State Senate. While separate, both seats serve much of the same community. First, we'll focus on Honolulu City Council District 2. The district includes Waikele and Kuniia, as well as Mililani, Waihewa, Waialua, Haleiva, Sunset Beach, Kohuku, Laie, Waiahole, and Kahalouu. Not only is the district expansive, it's also very diverse with farmlands, townhomes, a luxury beach resort, and even a tight-knit college town. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email or call us with your questions. We also encourage you to get involved with the conversation over on our Facebook page. Now to our guests. Matt Wire grew up in Waikele and graduated from Mid-Pacific Institute and the University of Hawaii at Mauna. He has served as a domestic violence prosecutor, policy advisor at the Honolulu City Council, and is on the Waipahu Neighborhood Board. Makua Kai Rothman was born and raised on the North Shore. He's a Kohuku High School graduate and WSL Big Wave World Champion. He's also a board member of the Hawaii Youth Surfing Development Organization and the Hawaii Tourism Authority Surfing Advisory Committee. Thank you both for joining us this evening. We're going to begin with Matt. Tell us what you think is the most pressing issue within your district right now.
Definitely. Having walked the district door-to-door over the past six months, you definitely can get a sense of what the community is feeling right now. And I think cost of living, cost of housing is definitely pressing on families. And I think that there's a lot that the city can do to respond to that. You know, just talking to folks up in Laie, for example, talk to family whose all their kids moved away to the continent because they can't afford to live here. Talk to a man in Village Park, a couple of years younger than me. It's frustrated that he's back at home, unable to afford his own place. I think that's really one of the issues that's affecting the community. We see infrastructure issues and the needs that we have across the district. Also, the need for the community to feel safe, both from crime, natural disasters. That's part of why I'm running. I think that using my experience in all three branches of city government, I can, you know, tap into that generational knowledge in the community and really work to deliver for our residents.
All right. And Makua, how about you?
I agree. I think spending of our hard-earned taxpayers' money and where it's going. Because if you really follow the money, you'll find the root problem to all of these issues. And I really feel going door-to-door, feeling the struggle, the skin in the game that each one of us have as residents. I have three children. I pay a mortgage. I know how it is to send my kids to school. And every day, look how expensive groceries are, the cost of living, electric, our water. And we, as city council, are really, really beholden to no one else but our people. And one of our main jobs is to make sure the city budget pans out. And I really think that looking into the spending and the waste in our city really comes down to solving each and every one of our issues. I just heard about generational knowledge. My great-grandmother raised my grandmother in this district. My mother raised me in this district. I raised my children in this district. My ashes will be spread in this district. There's nothing more that I want than to represent the city and county of Honolulu, its people and District 2.
You both bring up the cost of living. As a Honolulu City Council member, Makua, what would you do to help assist those that are having issues with cost of living?
Well, I think we can look directly into our city with 3,000 vacant positions and really try and staff those positions. How do we function? How does any government corporation function efficiently with 3,000 vacant positions? And I really think, starting at the top, it all comes down to making sure our city is functioning correctly and really stimulating economy by providing opportunity. Because the only way you provide anything, any kind of cost-of-living substance, you have to provide opportunity for people to earn a living wage.
All right. And Matt, over to you. What would you do to help with the cost of living?
I appreciate the question. I think two of the biggest ways the city can work on cost of living is through supporting housing and through supporting good jobs, right? We see, you know, issues at the Department of Planning and Permitting that are slowing down projects, especially in the urban core. I mean, this affects people in everyday life. I talked to Nancy in Waihewa who was talking about how their church couldn't get their permit, so they lost their contractor. I think, you know, streamlining DPP, filling the positions like Makua was talking about, digitizing stuff so we can get the permitting online faster. You know, opening up city lands, of course, in appropriate areas. Looking at how we can push some of the 70,000 vacant units back into the inventory can help meet that shortfall. And in terms of jobs, I mean, it's retraining, right? You know, as a planner at the Department of Community Services, one of our divisions is the Work White Division. They do great work, you know, helping folks retool, retrain. That's, you know, that and the work of the Oahu Work for Development Board. You know, are things the council can help invest in through the budget to ensure that our folks, you know, have the housing that they need and also the job, right?
All right. Thank you. Now, you can also submit your questions via Facebook, and you can also call in. We actually have a handful already, so thank you to those that have already done so. Makua, if elected, what would you do regarding the upcoming Sustainable Community Plan for the North Shore?
Oh, well, I would work directly with the community. We have to go and see what the needs are, what the people's wants, if they meet the needs. You know, right now, I think the real disconnect in government is communication between government officials and its people. You know, everything goes through second, third reading before anybody gets to testify, before... You know, there's bills coming up right now. There's ordinances coming up right now, the setbacks. All of these things that really don't have community input first. And I really think working with the community is the only way to solve and put forward, push forward the sustainable plan. Because if you even think about agriculture, our district has probably the most agricultural lands. If you don't understand how our agriculture got to where it is, to be able to put forth this North Shore Sustainable Community Plan, it really has to do with preservation of ag lands, supporting farming. Our farmlands and our agricultural system was really flawed since the 1800s with the removal of the Hawaiian people from their lands. Because that was true agricultural independence. Our agriculture was skewed towards export and not towards sustaining our people. And that's been going on for 200 years. So to really understand the issues of our community, you have to understand our community, its past, before you can look to the future.
Yeah, well, and I think that the first part is that we have to make sure that the community is involved in that process, right, of shaping the drafting of the plan to ensure that it reflects the actual values of the communities that it's affecting. And so from there, it's then what does the city do with it, right? So as a council member, you know, one of the best ways that the city can ensure that we're protecting our natural spaces, our preservation lands, our agricultural lands is with the zoning process, right, ensuring that we're not rezoning agricultural lands. Ensuring that when we're developing, we're developing in line with these Sustainable Community Plans, right? Because in effect, they're supposed to represent the wishes of the community. Now, I do think that oftentimes, government is not always directly connected to the community as it should be, right? And I think that's a big part of this, you know, campaigning process, I'm sure, right? Is it's part of why we've been walking door-to-door over the past six months. We'll still be walking door-to-door until the November election, is to have those conversations, right? To be able to actually listen to our neighbors, hear what they want to see, so that when we're representing them at the city council, we can actually, you know, bring about those changes, right?
All right. Well, you know, one of the greatest issues, I'm sure everyone will agree with me, is traffic. And, you know, Matt, what are some of your ideas? You know, what can we do about Laniakea and Pupukea and, you know, those regions that are just so full of traffic at any time when you're making your commute?
Definitely. You can't escape it anywhere on this island, and it's growing. I think that, you know, you bring up Laniakea, and I think that's a great example of where, you know, legislative or government officials need to get out of those silos, right? Because we need state and city partnerships to figure out, what are we going to do with that road? Are we going to move it back a little bit? You know, as Makua brought up, we have this setback conversation going on at the council about what does our future look like, understanding the impacts of, you know, coastal inundation, larger storms coming. And so I think that that's going to require us looking at each individual area. You know, we're talking earlier about the, you know, conversation over in Kahalouu and different opinions about what traffic mitigation should look like in that area. I think it really requires that we look at what the community needs and wants to see. Because, you know, every resident's going to know what's best for their neighborhood, for their community. And then in terms of, at the macro level, I mean, we really need to address tourism. I think tourism is a big part of why we see so much traffic on North Shore. You know, with hotels at, what, enough space for 7 million visitors and having 10 million visitors a year, those folks pour out into the community. And of course, we need them here, right, because tourism is such an important part of the economy. But we need to better manage that, so we see less impact on our neighborhoods.
And Makua, your thoughts about, you know, how to mitigate traffic in your district?
Well, I mean, first thing this morning, I woke up, I went to a meeting, I got stuck in road traffic by Pupukea. I got stuck in road traffic going up the Pineapple Road, and I got stuck in road traffic going toward Pearl City. And I really think it all comes down to the responsibility of our government officials and our spending. Because knowing this issue, I live in this traffic. Every single day, I watch this traffic go by. And the management of the way that they encumber the funds, the way that they fund these projects in certain sections at certain times, really comes down to planning. Our permitting department, our zoning commissions are so in disarray right now. Unless we fix the root problem of our city, our efficiency, and the way that our city government works, it's really not going to trickle down. You cannot just say, "I'm going to fix traffic with this solution." Because that solution requires what? Funding. And right now, our funding is very limited. The resources to get materials are going up due to inflation. I really, really think it all comes down to our city budget. How those funds are located, how those funds are encumbered. But actually, how are those funds delivered so that the people get a product? They get a return on their investment. Their hard-earned tax money goes to actually solving solutions and not just talking about fancy ways of doing it, actually getting it done.
Switching gears a little bit, you know, obviously with oceanfront homes that may be crumbling into the ocean and also parts of Ka'ava that appear to be crumbling as well. Makua, what would you do as far as, from the city and county perspective, as far as assisting people? Do you think that's something that we should be doing if their home is possibly, you know, going to be swept away?
Well, right now, we really got to look at the proposals in the city council with the setbacks of 40 feet to 60 feet to maybe 130 feet. And you've heard Esther Kiaaina say, you've heard Calvin Sei say. A lot of these things will really hurt the community. And right now, I have no say in that process. But should I get in there? I would make sure that our coastal communities are taken care of. And we make sure that any policy, any legislation that goes through, we really have to be diligent in our work. It looks like they want to put a blanket policy forward, a blanket legislation forth, and then go back and revise it. But once it becomes law, it really hurts people. We really need to understand the impacts that our people are having through these legislations that we are pushing through. And really, working with those communities to see how we can help them. Because a homeowner that's house is falling into the ocean really understands more than anyone how the city government can support him, how they can help him. That's why walking door-to-door on these coastal areas is very important and understanding the issues. I live in that issue. I watch it every day. So we really need to work with the stakeholders and the beneficiaries of either the legislation or the subsidies that we create.
All right. I do want to mention that time is limited, so if we want to keep our answers a little bit more concise, we can get to more questions. So Matt, the issue with homes being subject to possibly, you know, falling into the ocean, what are some of your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I can only imagine that's devastating, right, to watch your home fall into the ocean. And I do think that it's appropriate for us to look at, okay, what are the possibilities for us of, you know, to help those families, particularly generational families that may be in that situation? I know that there's legislation that DPP was looking at regarding possible land swaps. Of course, when we talk about setbacks, it has to be, you know, based on the data and science and mindful of what the community needs. So I think it is a long-term conversation. Long-term in the sense that, you know, there's many years of effects we're going to experience.
Coming up with a plan.
Yeah, but short-term in the sense that we have to act now to do it because it's facing us, you know, it's at our doorstep.
Right. Okay, Makua, Lyanna from Ha'ula says, would you guys support more windmills in Kohuku?
Well, absolutely not right now. Because first, we have to go through, you know, right now, it's a proposed ordinance of 1.25 mile setbacks. And actually, being a part of the whole process that went down, I mean, it was nine years in the making, if I'm not mistaken. And I was there when, you know, people were holding arms. I was there on ground zero while those wind turbines were coming in. And right now, the community is in disrepair. You know, communities are fighting, families are being torn apart on these issues. And it really comes down to, who does that energy benefit? The community has windmills, monster windmills that have a lot of effects on health, on psyche, on children's learning, but yet their electricity goes up. And if this is something that's supposed to help and give assistance to people and help create clean energy for our people, then how come it's not translating into these communities that have to suffer the burden of what they bring to their community?
Thank you. Matt, what are your thoughts about adding more windmills?
Yeah, I don't think adding more windmills is appropriate. I think that, you know, we have the project we have. You know, we weren't a part of that conversation when it was passed. I do think that ultimately, no one community should bear the full burden of our, you know, energy needs, particular or even our renewable energy needs. I think what I'm most concerned about right now is ensuring that the community receives the full benefit of the community benefits package.
All right.
Right, yeah.
And Jan from Rocky Point says, how are you going to enforce the vacation rental law that just went into effect?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that one, we have to look at, as we talked about earlier, filling those positions at the Department of Planning and Permitting. We see folks leaving the city in massive numbers, from HPD having 300 vacancies, 200 folks retiring to other departments, including DPP. And it slows down both the permitting process, but also the department's ability to enforce. And I think there's, you know, a lot of ways the city can step it up in that sense. You know, using pay differentials, you know, to pay folks a little bit more essentially, so they're not leaving to the private sector. You know, cleaning up this permitting process that we're dealing with, so then folks have more time to look at enforcement. And of course, cleaning up the TVU a little bit, tweaking it, and then ensuring that everybody knows how to navigate that when they do have legal, you know, TVUs.
All right. And Makua?
I think we immediately need to overhaul and get back to the basics of DPP as a whole. We really need to structurally reform what is supposed to be our governing body of these kinds of enforcements. It is a dire need for people to come. I live next door to a vacation rental that still rents. I live right next door. I've had people call my fiancee names. My children can't sleep at night. People burning out down my road, crashing into the wall. I understand this, this district. Like I said, it's my life. It's where I've been. It's where I've grown. I understand these issues. I face them every single day. I drive out of my driveway, have to deal with traffic. Every single day, you know, my children try and wake up for school. I have to listen to vacation rentals right next door. We need action now. We need to immediately address these issues and do whatever it takes in the city to get the enforcement capabilities needed now and get them functioning. Because this is pretty much a state of emergency for our district.
Angela from Kohuku says, what would you do to overhaul the Department of Planning and Permitting so that the rural nature of Ko'olau'oa would be preserved?
Well, I think allocating agriculture, its own department in planning, would be a big, a big plus. With, you know, right now, our backlog is 3,000 in the pre-screening, 4,500 in the e-plans, 1,000 something that haven't been picked up their permits. So I really think the structural redevelopment of DPP as a very important now situation needs to happen. And I really think that agriculture needs its own department. So when we talk about agriculture, we know exactly what we want. Because the scope of work really has to be dialed in. Like I said, if you don't understand the agricultural rule of Oahu and what it was used for in the past and how a lot of these ordinances and land use rules have been implemented since, you know, many years ago. So right now, we really have to look into that. Because the land use, coupled with the exact scope of how we intend to become food independent or how we intend to use these lands, and then really subsidizing them with the infrastructure needed. And not just physical infrastructure, but like I said, the social infrastructure, the market relationships, and all of those things really play a big part in the general plan that we have to restructure in the DPP.
All right. And how would you revamp DPP?
Yeah, I mean, as we talked about, filling those positions, digitizing. I think you mentioned at one of the previous debates, you had to submit something on a CD, like how, you know, so how do we move forward technologically, not just in DPP, but across, you know, all the departments?
But how do you preserve the area?
Yeah, so that allows for the enforcement. I think council member Kiaaina Chairwaters have, you know, been pushing for the committee that's actually in legislation but never affected or started, right, related to historical and cultural preservation. I think that's a great place to start, right, to ensure that the city is active in reviewing the development that's coming along, I think, ensuring that DPP is complying with the Sustainable Communities Plans that we talked about earlier. And like I said, the council's main role in supporting agriculture is ensuring that that rezoning doesn't occur on top of supporting the Good Food Program that the mayor just, you know, announced a few days ago.
All right. Let's see. Mark from Kahalouu is kind of throwing a little bit of a different question out there. Where do each of you stand on the rail project, should it go to Ala Moana as part of the original plan?
Yeah, I think that rail, you know, we've invested so much money, so much time. And I think that it's important that we make use of it. I do think that it's important going forward, given just everything that's happened so far, that we ensure that there's accountability, transparency. And ultimately, I do see it getting back on track right now. I think the current executive director has been proactive in cutting costs. You know, it's been unfortunate in Waipahu to have, you know, the parking ride taken away. I do hope that the city can work towards securing funding for that. I do think if we can afford it, we should go to Ala Moana, given all that we've invested in it. It provides that opportunity for us to have that mixed-use development, right, in the urban core. So folks won't have to raise their kids in the rearview mirror. You know, allows for this development that, you know, allows for small businesses with housing on top. And then also allows us to preserve, you know, our agriculture and preservation lands by kind of preserving development in the urban core, like I said.
All right. Makua?
Well, the rail is probably the biggest pressing issue to each and every one of us. Each and every one of our hard-working get-tax dollars, land-tax dollars. TAT that's supposed to be going to our infrastructure is really going to rail. And I think that getting rail operational where it's at now is a big step, that first phase. Because talking about TOD, if you really understand the rail line, there's only so many places you can actually develop in the urban core. A lot of that is privately-owned land. And there's not too many places that you can build massive structures besides, you know, the airport, I mean, excuse me, the stadium. And on the rail line west towards Kapale, where D.O. Horton and them have bought that Alun Farms land. And really understanding the economic driver of the rail system, the ridership. How are we going to get the ridership? Because I really think stimulating that TOD development along the rail corridor and maybe investing in that would stimulate more jobs for our communities, our workers, our everyday, you know, construction industry. Instead of going $3 billion more in debt and then trying to recoup that later and then trying to find more money to go back and get this started. I think we really follow the plan as is now, stop it where it is, get it functioning so we can deliver our product to our investors, our stakeholders, the people of the city and county of Honolulu who paid for this rail. Let's get it operational, working, and stimulate growth and economy around the rail so we can increase its ridership.
All right. The YNI landfill will be closing in 2028. Possible new site could be in your district. How do you feel about that?
Well, I don't think anybody feels great about a landfill in their district, regardless of who you talk to. And I really think it comes down to the responsibility of each and every one of us as the trash producers of this island. All of that trash that goes in that landfill comes from each and every one of us. We need to look at models from around the world, more sustainable models, more responsible models. I really think the preservation of agriculture and Korean hog farming methods, we can use a lot of that green waste that fills up the landfills to actually then turn that into compost and fertilizer. You know, if we really focus our efforts on responsibility.
Yeah, I don't support any of the identified locations in the district. I know the, you know, recent studies show that it poses a danger to the water resources there. And I also think it's important that, you know, as we go forward, as Makua was saying, we have to be more responsible in terms of how we generate waste, right? So we need to work towards composting, where maybe those green bins that a lot of folks have, you know, they can put their food waste and also their compostable, you know, manufactured goods in there with their yard waste. And that can be revenue generating for the city. City needs to invest in recycling, particularly of our construction waste, because right now, the sites that they have in the district, I don't think are appropriate.
And we're starting to run out of time, and so just wanted to ask maybe one last question. If you are elected, what would be the first law or bill that you would hope turn into law that you would sponsor?
No, that's a great question. I would say that in terms of legislation, working towards speeding up the permitting process for projects that can help, you know, facilitate housing, but also other types of projects, right? So stuff like rooftop solar, great job creator. We could do self-certification for those permits, so, you know, folks at DPP don't have to spend time on them and someone that's an expert already, an engineer or whatnot, can sign off on it, yeah? And then that speeds that up, creates more green jobs, also gives folks access to, you know, that rooftop solar to help save on their energy costs. I mean, I think that, plus all the other permitting issues, you know, in terms of just being able to clear them off folks' desks, is something that I would want to work on.
And we have about a minute left.
I would like to look at policy or legislation that deals with spending, responsible spending. Because how do you evaluate spending? You evaluate spending in a normal business by results or return. And if we don't have any kind of return on our hard-earned tax-paying dollars that go to fund our public trust, our bathrooms, the toilet paper. People are working four jobs, a high cost of living. They have this little time to spend with their family. They can't even go to the park and wipe their children's bottom and have a sanitary toilet seat to sit on. I really think legislation needs to be put forward to watch. Spending cannot be an open valve. We have to make sure everything we spend and everything we appropriate has a return in some way that benefits the people of Honolulu. Because like I said, I'm not here for political gain. I'm not here for, you know, popularity or any other thing. I am here to help and work and do whatever it takes. I'm giving up one of the greatest jobs that anyone can ever have, a professional surfer, to help my people.
We actually have to go, but we appreciate you. And we'd like to thank our guests, the candidates for Honolulu City Council District 2, Matt Wire and Makua Kai Rothman. As we get ready for our next segment featuring State Senate District 23, enjoy this hiki-no story. It was filmed in 2012 and features the late North Shore surfing legend Buttons Kaluhi O'Kalani.
Buttons is a legendary Hawaiian surfer who continues to charge the North Shore and give back to the community, sharing aloha in the spirit of surfing. A former Hawaiian pro surfer, Buttons currently runs a surf school in Waialua and is generous in his volunteer work.
You have to start from being an amateur. So I was an amateur surfer till I was 17 years old. Then I had my first pro contest at Sunset Beach, where I got first place. As a professional surfer, I got to see the world. Being a native Hawaiian, it's not too many of us Hawaiians got to travel back in the '70s, early '70s and '80s. So I was blessed with a gift that I have, being a surfer, and I got to see the world. Today, I teach surfing. I have a surf school called Buttons Surf School. I teach all ages, all kinds. We're all equal, so that's what I do today. I take people surfing. I was taught from my ohana, so it's only fair, it's only fair for me to teach my kids because I want them pretty much to be like their dad. So, you know, we pass the legacy on, and traditionally, it's what us Hawaiians do, you know? The ocean is a healing place for us, for everyone, not just me, but for everyone. So my message is that keep it, keep the tradition going, the legacy going. And, you know, it's something that I love and I cherish all my life, you know? I've been through some trials and tribulations in life, but my healing, my healing today is the ocean. So I like sharing and giving back to my ohana and to everyone, really. Just not my ohana, but everyone that comes and visits me that I take surfing. Just not, just not my ohana, but everyone that comes and visits me that I take surfing, so it means a very big part of my life.
Buttons continues to share aloha in the community of Waialua and teaching the joy of surfing, passing this tradition down to his ohana. This is Mercedes Joe from Waialua High and Intermediate School for hikino.
Aloha and welcome back to Insights on PBS Hawaii. We are now joined by candidates for Hawaii State Senate District 23. It covers Kuni'a, Waialua, Haleiva, Kohuku, Laie, down to Kahalua and parts of Kaneohe. Let's meet our guests. Democrat Gil Riviere is the incumbent in this race. He's held the seat since 2014. He's a Waialua resident and also co-founder of the nonprofit group Keep the North Shore Country. Republican Brenton Owa is a former television news anchor. He is a graduate of Kohuku High School and recently returned to the school as a substitute teacher for the Department of Education. And also want to remind our viewers, if you have any questions, please give us a call or you can comment on our Facebook page. So gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us. Now, we talked about this a little bit earlier in the show, but obviously for you, this will be a new topic for us to talk about. So Gil, tell us a little bit about traffic in your district and what can be done to kind of assist with the issues. I know there's construction and pupukea and all kinds of issues.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. We've had a lot of deferred maintenance on the highways for years and years, and the residents of the North Shore and Windward sides have really had to endure some poor maintenance. So that is finally being rectified. The Department of Transportation is fixing the roads, it's getting a lot better. It's a little inconvenient when the traffic backs up while they fix the roads. The volume of traffic has been a concern for many years, maybe 17 years since we started advocating to fix those issue at Laniakea. On the other side of the island, in what the Big Dip area, Kahualu Manu area, that area has been fixed with an additional traffic lane, but Laniakea has yet to be fixed properly. The Department of Transportation is presently budgeted and ready to go forward with a realignment within the next year or so.
And Brenton, your thoughts about traffic in the district?
Yes, I'll pick it up where the senator left off, Laniakea, and, you know, you heard Makua and him talk about that earlier and his frustration, right, because he has to go cross that to pick up his kid. Same here, my kid goes to school in Waialua, and so I'm going from Kohuku to try and cross that every day. And in January, we saw the parking lot there closed, and I know you mentioned there's a project on the way long-term. But short-term, you know, when it reopened, what we saw is a lot of tourists using it, and what do you see with everybody else? You know, you see a lot of locals, there's tourists in the traffic too, but we're all having to sit in it, right? And our drive time went from 40 minutes to about an hour and a half. And so to me, if we're in that position, and, you know, I'm not a lawmaker by trade or a lawyer or anything like that, but to me, it's a problem that common sense solution, well, locals only, or close it down, right? Because we can't cater to tourists when everybody else is suffering the quality of life. And real quick, on the other side, when we're talking about Kahalua, we're going to deal with traffic, and you're a Kahalua resident, so you're going to deal with that too next year, starting when the DOT, if they go forward with the roundabout at Kahalua, right? And that, a lot of people still don't know. So I'm glad you got us here to talk about these issues. I hope we can get into a lot more tonight.
Thank you. You know, and you mentioned tourism, obviously, making an impact on traffic as well. What are your thoughts about what we should do about tourism? Should we limit it and, you know, its major impact on the North Shore in particular?
So I walked every house one time over, a lot of them twice, and I gather, you know, I'm not the one with all the great ideas, I try to get it from people. And what I hear, you know, from Ka'ava, when they're seeing tourists on the beach and photographers taking that, you know, classic shot where you're going towards Kuuluk and you see all the mountain, right? One thing that was pitched with them is, hey, charge them a fee, right? If you're a tourist and you're going to go on the beach, put a fee on them, right at the airport. Because we can, all the tourists, they're going to pay, to me, they're going to pay. We rise up, the taxes for them at the hotels, they still come, right? Kaneohe Bay is full of them, and they're coming, so let's take advantage of that. If they're going to come, let's raise, you know, what they have to pay, and let's cut back on what locals have to pay at the same time.
Gil, your thoughts about tourism and its impact?
Yeah, it's been an issue for years, and it's something we've been advocating for. I put a bill in a couple of years ago to try to get the attention of Hawaii Tourism Authority, and it passed out of the Senate. What we were trying to do was get Hawaii Tourism Authority to recognize that there were too many people coming. And so when tourism would exceed 8 million or 9 million, that we would cut their budget. And they weren't appreciative of that, they said, no, we need the money. We said, well, if you've succeeded in bringing the people here, it's time to start managing them. Now, if you've watched the news in the last year or so, you've seen Hawaii Tourism Authority has done a big shift on their focus. They are now doing more of a destination management, trying to mitigate the impacts and manage and create structures. As far as how to manage visitors, I've promoted for the last couple of years with the State Department of Parks, in particular, a geo-fencing. So you could create a digital area, and when visitors enter that area, they would have to pay maybe a fee to go on the trails, Na'ala Halei trails, for example, or state parks. And you could, you could regulate who's in the parks and who's not, and collect appropriate fees and thereby hopefully get some control over the overtourism that we're experiencing.
What are your thoughts about the issue with housing in terms of the homes falling, you know, close to falling in the ocean, and whose jurisdiction do you think that is as far as responsibility?
It's a really big issue. I am part of a task force that's working with a lot of scientists, experts, Surf Rider Foundation, homeowners. It was important for me to bring in homeowners so that they have their voice too, because you need to bring everybody together to come up with solutions on these tough questions. I have some sympathy for people who are, maybe they inherited their home, or maybe they've been there for years, and they need to try to protect their assets, maybe that's their only asset. I have less sympathy for people who come in and buy and protect and try to stay and build seawalls and such. So it is an ongoing issue, it has to be resolved. The working group I'm with has some recommendations, we're about to put a final report out soon for steps forward.
The senator is right there, it really comes down to the community, right? Because just like from Ka'ava to Ha'ula and the roads falling in, we keep doing that temporary repairs of shoring it up with the boulders. The state, within these next two years, from what I'm told by the deputy director, we have to have a conversation, and the community has to decide what it wants. Are we going to save it? Are we going to move it in? But there has to be a plan, right? And so when you go back to the houses, same thing, right? Overall, we represent the community, and so personally, it wouldn't be what I want. And like him, I would feel bad, you know, about the person who lived there their whole life, and it's falling in, they got to do what they got to do. But the community has to come to an agreement on what it wants as far as sustainability and the coastline there.
If elected, what would be your first thing that you would focus on as far as your district is concerned?
Oh, I mean, there's so much in the community from one side to the other, but for us, the top couple of things, I can't just nail one, but the top couple of things, what I'm here to do is take down greed and corruption, right? And there's so much of that. And so one of the things we want to do is establish term limits. And I know other legislatures have put it forward, I know you support term limits as well. But that's number one, what we want to try and do in the state legislature, and two, prevent non-residents from buying. I know there's, there was a, the grassroots came out with a survey to try to say that, oh, you know, it wasn't non-residents that rose this price. But if you look at the data from the Honolulu Board of Realtors, February, March 2020 to March of 2022, that's when the prices of, the median price of housing jumped more than $400,000. The study looked at a wrong time period, but that's what we want to do. We want to prevent non-residents from buying our homes, because what we saw during the pandemic was just a rush of people who had money out, you know, outbidding all the locals who the salaries are a lot lower than what these people are coming in, and the housing just, you know, went. And now, look, where are we at? We have property taxes, right? Kupuna who cannot pay because of fixed budget, you've got rents, people seeing rents go up, they're stuck, they can't pay, so they have to move. I've seen so many people with the same story. They moved to Oregon, Vegas, California, and the aloha leaves with them, so we got to stop that.
And Gil, you've been in office since 2014. Is there something that you would like to tackle that you already have or something new?
Something that I want to continue to follow on is the overtourism. Kaneohe Bay has been mentioned. Kaneohe Bay is just swarming with kayaks and people, just unpermitted and illegal activities. So we've been pushing for the last couple of years to get deal and R, to work with the Kaneohe Bay Regional Council to come up with some solutions for addressing that. One idea that I'd like to explore next year is to require any kayak to have a sticker, such as a bicycle permit. You can do that for bicycles, why couldn't we have a, maybe a QR code sticker for kayaks? And then you get some control over whether it's a private kayak or a commercial kayak. It's going to be a start. We need to nail down the illicit sales through Venmo and online, where they say, oh, I didn't exchange any cash, but you can use this kayak over here. So much like the vacation rentals, we've been trying to nail down, if you're advertising, then you're guilty. If you're receiving money, then you're guilty. If you're advertising illegal trips out to the sandbar, we want to, we want to try to rein in on that. So that's one area. The other are the cost of living impacts that, you know, everybody's feeling. One thing I voted against a couple of years ago, which was really important, I think, was I was against the property tax increase, where there was a new statewide property tax that the state was proposing. And I was the only legislator to vote against that, 75 to 1. So now, as we look at the property taxes going through the roof, everybody's saying, wow, what happened? I've got some other legislation for the lower-income workers, tax credits for rents, foods, and such like that, to try to help the lowest wage earners.
Thank you. Switching gears a little bit, $600 million have been allocated to Hawaiian homelands. What needs to be done to ensure that money is spent wisely and also provided for those that are on the waitlist?
Real quick, if I can, before I get to that, want to jump on the Kaneohe Bay, because it is, it is a big problem in our area. And as the senator mentioned, I see the tourists all the time, and there's more of them in the bay, that's, that's a problem, right, environmentally. But me, I'm not one for bans or anything like that, because, because to me, that would just be band-aiding a problem. The real problem is the number of tourists that are coming in. I don't want to, with me, you know, if we're in there, residents are never going to have to fear to do something, right? Because out there, you have so many people who lost their jobs, they can't afford it, right? And so you've got the low-hanging fruit, the tourists, in the bay. So what do you think people are going to do? They're going to be motivated to try to get that money. So we got to provide alternative ways for people to start businesses, right? Like Whitmore, I know there's a value-added educational center coming up. Those are types of things that we need to have more in communities where we can get businesses off the ground. So if you're growing ulu and you want to make it, you know, into flour, you can go make a deal with the state, get on your feet, right? The first year is free, year five, you're paying full. So, you know, you kind of process your stuff and get out the way, we need to do that. Back to DHHL, if you want to phrase the question again, sorry, I went off on that, but I did want to talk more about Kaneohe Bay, because it's such an issue.
It's an important issue.
How do you ensure that the money is being spent wisely and that those on the waitlist are being provided?
I mean, one thing, as he knows, that the state legislature, the senators get to do is confirm the department heads, right? And so that's number one, that's where you Q and A them, that's where you find out who's the right fit for the job. So I mean, that's, to me, that's from the top. You affect the leadership, you affect everything below.
So accountability?
Yep.
What are your thoughts?
It's a long time in the making, and it is going to require the proper leadership and policies. They spend too much time, I think, planning and not enough time on executing. And so as the legislature, we've, we have an oversight on them, on their budget, but it is difficult to move the bureaucracies, I just don't want to over.
All right, you know, your district is quite large and has an abundance of agricultural lands. How do you support farmers and create more products like ulu flour?
So one of the biggest problems with land, agriculture land, is the cannibalization of it into gentleman farms, fake farms, subdivisions, and all kinds of mischief that's going on. A lot of that is at the city level, but I've been involved in, over the last few years, to try to crack down on these agricultural CPRs, condominium property regimes. So a landowner will buy a chunk of land, he'll create a bunch of condominiums, but not subdivide it. He then sells these sections of the land, and everybody thinks that they're entitled to build a house, but they're not. And yet they end up doing it, or they live on the property, they're not farming, they build a house and it goes on. So we were able to get some legislation through in the last couple of years. One, to give the Department of Planning and Permitting a better authority to go onto the property to investigate suspicious building and activity. Previously, they've been prevented for going on the property. And two, was instrumental in making sure that any new agricultural condominium has a disclosure from the county on what can and cannot be done, and that more importantly, it's reported in the final public report. So anybody buying the property in the future is well aware what they can and cannot do. That would then help protect the land for long-term leases for farmers and water. So land, water, affordability are the keys.
Brenton?
And then, you know, to go on top of that, because he's right there, to go on top of that, me as a journalist, Huimano, it wasn't ag land, but same concept, and you know how the city goes, right, with the rezoning of land. Somebody buys preservation land in Huimano, back beyond Huikalu, somebody bought 52 acres for $299,000, came to the neighborhood board, said their plan, they wanted to put market value houses on it, a couple of them, and did the story. The story aired, guy hasn't come back, right? We try to stop it before things happen. That's, that's what we do, in simplest form.
You know, obviously, state lawmakers are key in determining how tax dollars are spent. What projects or initiatives would you prioritize that funding for?
Going back to the value-added centers, that's, you know, it took a long time to finally get that one educational one, but if we can push more dollars to, like I said, getting, getting rid of the low-hanging fruit, the tourist opportunities and more agriculture opportunities where people would actually want to farm, the motivation that they have to go get their kayaks and go, you know, cater to the tourists, it should be that same motivation, it should be that easy to transition into your business. We've got to help businesses in Hawaii, we're overtaxed, everybody knows that, right? So we need to make it so that all these people with these great ideas, again, who lost their jobs, and, you know, they have it, they can do it, but they're just, you know, they just feel the weight of the world because Hawaii is not a place to do, you know, business.
Gil?
There's several things that we need to do. One is, we've got pretty creative people here, and we need to support creative media, creative industries. We do that to an extent, but there's more, there's, there's low-hanging fruit laying out there that we can get better jobs. We recently saved Kawai Hapai Airfield from closure. That was slated to be shut by DOT, and we were able to pull people together to keep that going. The value of the airfield is that it provides a venue for high-paying jobs in airplane mechanics, pilots, and aviation-related activities. So that's another area where we can go. But you mentioned the budget, what's the priorities? I think we can never get too far away from education as one of our top priorities. Each year, education has come in and fight against every new shiny idea. And my position is that we have to be sure that we fund our absolute priorities first before we go expanding into other areas, and education is one that we mustn't forget.
Senator, since you brought that up, I got to ask, what happened in there with the financial literacy bill that, not this past session, but the one right before that, it got all the way to the finish line, and this session it was never brought up?
A lot of bills, it's hard to say on what happens. They go into conference committee and they don't, they don't come forward. I'm not sure why that bill...
It was, yeah, it was close, and it was like, you know, financial literacy, we've been asking, I've been asking for that. You hear the kids in the schools, they ask, hey, why are we learning this? You know? Sometimes you don't have an answer.
Financial and media literacy.
All the way from elementary.
We need people to understand what's, what's fake news and what's not, too. There's a lot of things that...
You don't got to tell me about that, I know all about it.
Hawaii's prison system is overcrowded and short-staffed. Obviously, we're in need of a new prison. What are your thoughts about putting it in your district?
I mean, you have to go back to the community, but to me, it wouldn't make sense. I mean, there's so much things our community needs, right? You can, again, you talked about the ag lands, we got the road projects, we got, you know, so much people struggling, don't, don't dump something like that in our community, the community of the voiceless.
But it seems that nobody wants a prison in their community.
It's a good point, but hey, we want a lot of stuff and we've got to nothing, you know? We've got to nothing in our community. There's a lot of people that feel that way. We got a field and stuff like that, you know, shiny objects here and there, but, you know, from Kahalua to Waialua, the representative, that's why I'm here, because so many people came up and was like, Brenton, you're one of us, you know the issues, you know, go represent us, we don't have a voice.
Gil?
One of the problems that we have is that we do get things that we don't want, such as those monstrous wind turbines towering over Kohuku. And I was there shoulder to shoulder with the folks when those terrible troubles came and the turbines were delivered. I've been active, I've helped stand up the community to be a greater voice for itself, and I'm proud of the Kohuku community and Ha'ula community. We're working with Ha'ula community now to build a resiliency hub to, for the next disaster preparedness.[1758.38]
But what are your thoughts about a prison?
I'm sorry, back on the prison area, I always, my first default is always with the community. But I do think there may be some justification to consider it. I think it's worth a consideration. It could provide jobs, it could provide agro forestry. Or you, you could, if it's a minimum security prison, for example, that you could put people out working in agriculture as an example, or forestry. So there's, there's a potential there. I don't know if we would rather expand the Wa'ava facility, which is a minimum security facility. So that might be the home for it, but we might get our inmates out to do, you know, good.
So summer is starting to wrap up, right? We're getting into fall and into winter and that means it's going to be rainy season. And with the floods on Kamehameha Highway, you know, imminent rains are going to cause a lot of issues. What kind of things are you looking at doing to help mitigate flood impact?
We need to rethink our stream maintenance. Several years ago, there was a, a change in the law that said, everybody who owns on a particular part of the stream is responsible for stream maintenance. And what that led to is a tragedy of the commons, where since everybody had just a little piece of it, nobody was ultimately responsible for that stream. So I think we need to go back to looking at more centralized stream maintenance from either the city or the state. That's one area. We do need to bolster our stream maintenance crews where the bridges are and where it's identified and it's already set up for that. The city does have a program for some stream maintenance.
And, you know, the one thing that pops out, right, is Waiaule. We've been dealing with that for what seems like ever. There's money there, correct?
No, we didn't get, well.
I know, I know when Congressman Kehle was going around, he was saying, there's, there's money for this, we can get it done, there's money for this.
Yeah, that, I don't think that money came through. There was, there was that effort that we were trying to do this year to coordinate and create a stream maintenance system for Waiaule since it's all state-owned and it made a lot of sense. We did not get that bill through, something we're going to try again next year.
I guess I was under the impression we had the money, but that's something that we have to do, you know? If I'm in there, there's saying, there's some things that we're going to fight tooth and nail. I mean, pretty much everything that we set our minds to, but not everything on the table, right? Just our priorities and that got to be one of them. Because when people is, like Makua then was saying earlier, when our quality of life, you know, we can't even live, we can't even, we don't have time for our kids because we're sitting in this traffic. We kind of get home. It's unacceptable.
There has been severe flooding up and down in the region. Haleiwa, you know, had some severe flooding.
Ha'ula's river got wiped out.
Ha'ula, right? Ha'ula, so like Wa'kane, every time it rains, it seems, and Waiaule. So there, there's Kahana, it's, it is legion. So we do need to get better responsiveness, better stream maintenance and a more committed.
And perhaps better inspections prior to rain. Okay, last question from Casey. How can we support more 21st century jobs in the country?
In the country?
Maybe they meant county.
Oh, okay.
But it says country on the question.
You know, and I always go back to the agriculture. The state, you know, I have, I have a quote, a saying, malama mentality. Pretty much, you know, think of others before yourself. But, but in this, you know, regard, the state, when, when you're looking at a place to develop and it's ag land and you're trying, and it's going to the city and whatnot, that can't be the mentality. The mentality has to be, you hear it all the time from the governor's office, sustainability this and that and that. But like in the country, like you mentioned, we got the wind turbines. The residents aren't benefiting from that, you know? And the state has to switch its mentality. Lawmakers got to switch their mentality to what is best, what is going to help locals live and devote the funding there, devote the energy there.
We've got an awful lot of natural beauty in our district. I like to brag that we have the, we have all the bays and the watersheds and the conservation lands, the agriculture lands. Our district really is a magical place. It's what people think of when, when they think.